...states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would actually like to begin this evening with a moment of silence. First, for our school board vice president and former president Dave Holden, who passed away of cancer this past week. Dave was a leader in this community and somebody who I didn't always agree with, but somebody who I respected immensely. And we definitely want to keep his family and all of his loved ones, excuse me, in our thoughts and prayers. And I'd also ask for a moment of silence for the apparent homicide victims in York Township, a really dreadful act that happened just this weekend to our south. So if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Okay, present this evening from city council are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Gearbaugh, Rhodes, Tahar, and Dillon, councilwoman Sibyl Koenig, and councilmember Roth will be absent this evening. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, deputy treasurer McDonough, police chief Rennick, and DPW director Fordice, I believe, is here. Yes, okay, I'm sorry, Jeff. For the rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd please sign in the back, we would appreciate that. Excuse me. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, the chair would seek a motion to excuse the absences of councilwoman Sibyl Koenig and councilman Roth.
So moved.
Thank you, councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Tahar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is Simple Recycling, and that is going to be presented by Mr. Scott Brady. Scott, the floor is yours. If you'd like to come up to the podium.
Thank you for allowing me to present Simple Recycling. This program is the highest-impact environmental initiative a city can implement with zero cost or operational requirement. Let me say that again. This program is the highest-impact environmental initiative a city can implement with zero cost or operational requirement. We provide a curbside clothing and home goods recycling program that is free to both the city and the residents. In fact, it's revenue-creating for the city. It fills sustainability and green initiatives. What we do, we provide a curbside pickup service, specially-designed recycling bags, all informational materials, all trucking expense, and all related insurance coverage, and all program management. There is nothing for the city to manage or pay for. We're currently operating in Lansing, East Lansing, South Lion, Wald Lake, and Harrison Township. We also have boats this week with the city of Ypsilanti and Macomb Township. We have programs pending in many other southeast Michigan communities. We're also up and running in the metropolitan Cleveland area, metropolitan Indianapolis area, Dallas, Texas, and Houston, Texas. So the program has got some legs here the last year or so. One of the statements I like to make about our program is, "We're not competing with charities, we're competing with landfills." People kind of look at me funny and say, you know, "What's that?" Well, according to the EPA numbers, only 15% of unwanted clothing is actually donated in the traditional fashion, if you will, where people actually call up or make an appointment with a Purple Heart, Salvation Army, St. Vincent's, T'Pol, any of those type charities. 85% simply ends up out on the curb and in the landfill. And that's what we're trying to capture, and we're trying to make it as easy as possible for your residents to do so. What happens is, once we enter into a contract with municipalities, we do an extensive outreach and education program. We send out an initial mail piece in a postcard format announcing the program, but a week or so after that, a second mail piece goes out, which is a packet, which includes bags, tags, and another information card. But a week or so after that, a third mail piece goes out announcing, "The week of July 6, along with your other traditional recyclables, on trash day, please set out the green bags or green-tagged items," where our trucks go along and mirror the routes that the other recycling vehicles and/or trash hauler picks up. So there's no confusion with the residents, "Well, does it go out on the second Tuesday of every month or every other week?" It just goes out, you know, mirroring your regular trash hauling routes. What our drivers do then, when they pick up bags at a resident, they'll replace them right then and there. Anytime a resident wants to call in needing additional bags or whatnot, it's no problem. Our numbers are listed on all of our literature in the bags. So again, there is, you know, virtually nothing for anybody at the city to manage. Some of the cities we're involved with actually will have on the automated attendant, you know, hit two for waste management, hit three for Simple Recycling, and the phone call will automatically go to our people. So. Any questions?
What questions do we have for Scott?
Not a question, but some additional comments if I could.
Absolutely. Please.
At this point, the Environmental Commission became aware of this program a couple of months ago, and we did some extensive research, discussed it over two different meetings, and voted to enthusiastically endorse this program to come to city council for consideration. The tag that Mr. Brady mentioned is somewhat like this. It can go on something that's too large to fit into a bag, like a sofa or upholstery chair that you want to sit at. And then those are the bags that you can put loose items in. And there's a rare assortment of things that they will take, and that list, I'm sure, will be provided in the literature.
And it's actually clearly printed on the bags and tags as well.
Excellent. Anything further, Mr. Rhodes?
No, I will do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional questions? Mr. Tahar, please.
Thank, yes, thank you. I spent quite a bit of time talking to Mr. Brady at a recycling conference recently. So, and so I'm just going to ask for a little bit more information, some of the questions that I asked at that time. So, once you gather up the material, where does it go? And how do you manage it?
What we do is, once we collect all the materials, we actually have local thrift store partners that do the initial sort. It's usually somewhere between 10 and 20% of what's collected is actually resellable here locally at thrift stores. Then after that, the remaining merchandise gets bailed up and gets exported, usually to third-world countries. Whereas this jacket may not be resellable here locally, but somebody in a part of the world that doesn't have a jacket still can be used in the manner in which it was designed and manufactured for. After it gets sorted at that point, the remaining inventory usually turns into rags or wiping cloths, and then the balance of that gets ground up into fiber for insulation or shoddy padding. So there's virtually nothing that ends up in a landfill anywhere on the planet.
And if, one other question, if I may?
Absolutely. Please continue.
In communities where you're currently active, have you had any trepidation on the part of existing charities about having you come in or feeling that, just feeling, even though unfounded, that you might be competing with them?
Yeah, initially, you know, there is a little bit of pushback till people actually do understand that we wholeheartedly support any and all the charitable organizations. Actually, our sister company operates the clothing and home goods collection for the Purple Heart. And in the communities that we're up and running, not only has the Purple Heart not seen a decrease in collections, in many cases, it's actually increased, creating more awareness, you know, of that category of recyclable material.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tahar. Anything further? Do you want to make a quick comment, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Just that city staff is working with Simple Recycling folks with agreement language that would be, if council would like to pursue this, we'd bring that back at a future meeting for consideration.
I assume there's no objection to have staff work with the folks from Simple Recycling to negotiate a contract?
No, I, from my perspective, I think this is better handling, instead of having distribution points throughout the city where stuff can pile up. I think this is a great approach.
Actually, that's a good point, Mr. Gearbaugh. In many communities where you see these drop boxes, if you will, in parking lots at retail locations, many municipalities are actually legislating against it because they are in fact becoming dumping grounds for, you know, many negative situations arise from it. So, anyway, I just wanted to interject that.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no objections, we'll expect something then, Mr. Campbell, at either our next meeting or perhaps the second meeting in July. Very good. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, up next, we have the Arts and Culture Committee annual report. We have the chair. How many members of your committee do you have with you today, Cindy?
Just myself and Christine.
Okay, and of course, Mr. Tahar, who's the council rep. Very good. Appreciate you both being here.
We're going to see if we can get this tech going.
Well, assuming Chase can get it to work, you may, you may begin whenever you're ready.
If this doesn't work, then I'll try something else.
While we're doing this, do you, did people receive that paper copy at the end of the report?
No.
That's fine.
If you have paper copies or you would like to get us paper copies, our clerk can make sure that they're distributed and put in everyone's council on their desk. Do you have copies right now?
Well, we have a one-page version of the same information that clerk Royal.
I will make copies. I thought PowerPoint was going.
Okay. Yes, well, we thought the PowerPoint would replace it.
How many adapters can we turn? Hey, hey, look.
It's all right. That looks promising.
It is coming up, but it's not detecting the PowerPoint.
That was it. The pressure was on. And there goes Chase. Yay, Chase. Hi, I'm Cindy Baxter. I'm the chairperson of the Arts and Cultural Committee, and this is Christine Mitchell, and she is one of the new members. I'm here to give the report, the annual report, for the Arts and Cultural Committee. Our mission at the Celine Arts and Cultural Committee is to cultivate, connect, and encourage a community rich in artistic, creative, and cultural opportunities. We have gone, this is, these are a list of our members, we have gone from having four members a year ago to having 10 members. So in our growth, we had a few growing pains about how we were going to function as a group of 10, and we have hit the ground running in the last couple of meetings. We have really moved along quite well. We've spent last July and August going over our mission, our visions, our setting, our strategic goals, and coming up with some action plans and dividing into work groups. So it was pretty hard to have much of a work group with only four of us, and when we started to expand, that was a great help. We focused on promoting public awareness of the Celine Arts and Cultural, Celine Arts and Cultural community, as well as collaborating with some of the invested people in the Arts and Cultural community. And within those set action plans, we have completed the moving of the Orange Risden bust statue that was installed interiorly here. And the plan was always that it was supposed to be an exterior sculpture. We wanted to add to our, the many sculptures that are in Celine as public art. And it had a time capsule underneath it that was not to be installed exteriorly. So we needed to work with the Historical Society to move that, to make sure that the time capsule was replaced, as well as working with Arnett's to get a wonderful recycled piece of granite to have the bust installed on. We also worked with the Historical Committee to have the, a water trough installed next to the Leather Bucket Alley. We felt those two things went together. We had a pad already poured there, and the trough looks great. And the Collaboration Committee is working with the Historical Society to have some kind of an installation, opening, ribbon-cutting ceremony. That, and an idea of reopening a Founder's Day in Celine. That coming with the Cesquith Centennial, we're feeling that that's a good way for us to move. We have worked on increasing our funding for a number of projects, and I'm happy to say that this year, we have really hit the mark. We have had several, we're starting to be more recognized in the community as having, as being the kind of people to come and say, "How can we help you? How can we move this forward? What are your stumbling blocks? What are the kinds of things that we can do for you? And what kind of information can you give us to be able to extend to the, to the public so that they'll be aware of various projects?" Our collaborating partners are the Historical Society, Main Street, the Area Schools, the District Library, and Parks and Recreation. We've worked with, varying projects with, with these people, groups. This year, we worked on the, worked with this, the Celine Main Street to help partner with the, them about the downtown banners, the student banners that are up. I think they're still up currently. They did a really nice job. Heidi McClelland, who's also on our committee and on the Main Street Committee, was chairperson of those, and she did a very nice job with that. We are working with the Historical Society and I believe the Park and Rec, Carla, to work on the Salt Springs Historical Marker, which is going to be installed in the salts, at the Salt Springs. It's about the Salt Springs, which has to do with the Salt Springs Park that is currently happening. We're not sure exactly where that's going to be installed, but we're in the process of working with, is it Jim Peterson? Jim Peterson?
Peters.
Peters, sorry. Added a son on there. Jim Peters, to help him through the process and fund that process. It's a long process. It has to go before the state, it has to come before you, the wording, et cetera, is before they cast the bronze, so that we're working with, with him on that. We have been working with, on a public art installation, haven't got a lot of traction on that. Part of it was because of the, the past two winters with the Celine Area Schools. We were working with the high school, and they got hit with so many snow days and ice days and so forth that, that wasn't able to fit in their curriculum. But we're still moving forward on trying to get more public art installations, either on the pads that we already have or some, some other locations. We're working with Main Street, some local artists. The art teacher at Pleasant Ridge is interested, and I just got a email from Val Mann, who's a local artist, and she said she had someone who was coming up with some ideas. So that's kind of in the, in the phase of, we've worked on it a bit, and we're working on it some more. I understand that there's been some discussion about having an outdoor arts and culture venue, part of it to do with Hennyfield or the piece of property that's on the street opposite of Hennyfield. That's just kind of newly come across. And we are working with Marcy Cameron on the little free libraries and the, and the Park and Recs department on that one. We are at the point of, she has a design, she's picked them out, she knows how many, they, they know how many they want, and we are going to fund that as soon as she's able to get in contact with the free little libraries and figure out how many we can afford and where those would be located. And our main goals for, is to continue that increased collaboration and to increase our public arts commissions. We're, we're planning on getting some applications in and trying to get some more in the planning process of how we can actually do a commissioned piece, hopefully to tie in with Celine Past, Present, Future, the Cesquith Centennial. Thank you.
I just want to take a moment to recognize the support of city council with the increased funding that we've been able to increase our, our profile in the community, and also to recognize Terry and particularly Linda's contribution to our committee. It's been very valuable.
Good, thank you, ladies. We appreciate your time and, of course, appreciate your leadership. Are there any questions from members of council? No questions?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Again, we appreciate your time. Okay, moving on in the agenda this evening, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
My name is Riley Hollenbaum, the executive director of Celine Main Street. Tonight, I'm here to represent the Celine Main Street Business Development Team, along with the design team, on two different agenda items. The first is in the discussion section on downtown parking. Celine Main Street Business Development Team recommends not to take action on this item this evening. Currently, the Business Development Team has a survey out to downtown business owners that will hopefully collect more information about moving forward with this. Past weekend, also, myself, Wally, downtown business owner of Max, and a member of our board, along with Todd, in Art with the Celine Area Chamber, attended the MDA workshop on downtown parking. We think it would be important to absorb this information, get this information out, and hopefully learn from it before you take action on that. Moving to agenda item 15117 on Merchant Park, the Celine Main Street Design Team fully supports moving forward with this project, along with URS Designs, and we feel that is important to move forward quickly, and hopefully we can complete this in this construction season, considering next construction season, there will be a Michigan Avenue makeover. And having that park done will really improve that during that time. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Riley. Are there any other citizen comments on agenda items? Please.
I'm Joan Roth. I live at 186 Anwood Court and have resided in Celine since 1979. Honorable Mayor Marl, Mr. Campbell, and Celine City Council members. Two weeks ago, I sent a letter to Mayor Marl and Mr. Campbell and feel compelled to appear in person to once more express my vehement opposition to the city of Celine's spending a lion's share of a quarter of a million dollars for the proposed renovation of Merchant Park. I don't see any rationale nor justification to spend this huge sum of money on the extremely small space. It's not city property, as I understand. It is obscure and somewhat hidden space, and from my observations through the years, is infrequently used, other than occasional smokers, cellphone users having private conversations, and people accessing backdoors to adjacent businesses, the space does not appear to be used. I understand the proposed renovation includes the relocation of the trash grease area to the east end of parking lot number one as well. Of all the businesses adjacent to Merchant Park, I'm assuming Dan's Tavern generates probably the largest volume of garbage in grease. The relocation would mean employees would have to walk a good length of the parking lot, making it inconvenient, awkward, especially in the winter, and offering a greater risk of leaking grease through the lot. In addition, the exit from parking lot one would temporarily be blocked simultaneously with Hall Street, running one way north off the busy Michigan Avenue. I certainly support maintaining Merchant Park as safe space. Leveling the ground, replacing crumbling concrete and pavers makes sense for safety. Surely, this maintenance would be far less costly than a quarter of a million dollars. Money saved from this renovation proposal could be used elsewhere that would benefit the majority of Celine citizens. I sincerely hope Celine City Council will make a wiser, more prudent, and rational use of public money. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mrs. Roth. Are there any other citizen comments?
This would be on Merchant's Park also. I really feel that, number one, it is not a park. It was named that by an individual who owned the property. It is not city property. A quarter of a million dollars it could run up to. Tonight, you're looking at $25,000 for design, but it appears that if, they also might, would talk about low-impact design and stormwater management, it appears for more money. And irrigation, landscape plannings. And I noticed that the other parks, when they put about $50,000 into landscaping, by the time the salt and the streets were cleaned and the salts were put on the plants, they all died. I feel that this quarter of a million, as you know, I'm very interested in repairing our sidewalks for safety, and this is a direct benefit to the citizens of Celine. This is not. This is window dressing, and I feel it's an unfair cost to be burdened by the taxpayers. As far as the sidewalks, I know, Mayor, you had said that they were going to grind down some of the sidewalks that are uneven, and I think you said that in January, they did the study last October. And as yet, from what I understand, they haven't even given the contract to the middle of July, which means that they will be doing some sidewalk leveling, it appears, in August. That is a very, to me, not very active pursuing of the safety of sidewalks. Thank you.
There are other citizen comments? No, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item E. One, C14-124E, the general fund budget.
To, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gearbaugh, to acknowledge receipt of the June 10th memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough?
That's the one.
Okay, very good. So that will become, that'll become the first item under New Business. Everyone clear on what Mr. Gearbaugh is requesting be removed? It's item E, and it's found on page two of the agenda. Okay? I think we're clear on that. So is there a motion, then, to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So move.
Moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The first item under New Business is the item that was just removed from the consent agenda. It'll be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 10th, 2015 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough regarding the third amended FY15 general fund budget and to approve and adopt the third amended FY15 general budget as submitted. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt and to approve and adopt?
So move.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Mr. Gearbaugh, you had a question or concern, sir?
Yeah, could you clarify on the, where it indicates on the expenditures? It said the advanced pension funding for 7200 was added, which I understand, but it says along with an additional $31,000 for higher-than-budgeted OPEV costs? Had we anticipated that?
We, we took a different approach to the OPEP calculation this year. In the past, we've always used rates like two years behind, and so we talked to Plant Moran and was, you know, was there any reason why we can't use more current, you know, health costs? So they said, "No, go ahead and, and update it." So that cost obviously was a little bit higher. The HSA was increased as well, so that impacted a higher rate for the OPEP calculation.
And how will that impact next year's budget?
It, I'd have to look at exactly what the change is going to be on our healthcare premiums and see, but it'll probably have to adjust upward as well, because it'll probably track at least the same. at least the same, if not an incremental increase, 2% or something.
Yeah. I was just looking to see what that means in terms of how much more we're putting towards compensation this year. Okay. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Girbaugh?
No, I just wanted clarification on that.
No. It was a good question. Anything else before Joanne returns to her seat? Ms. McDonough, thank you. Appreciate it. If there's no subsequent discussion, it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business Item 15-113. This is 2015 Celine Summerfest Community Event Changes. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 10th, 2015 email from Chief Rennick and to approve or not to approve the changes to the 2015 Celine Summerfest Community Event application with the changes as submitted. Is there a motion?
Moved to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Chief Rennick, do you care to comment at all? Pretty much speaks for itself. Any questions from the dais? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just real quick, are there any anticipated changes in the city's support costs?
I believe that's a no.
That's my understanding, that's no additional cost.
Okay.
Mr. Trapp is here, but that's my understanding.
Mr. Trapp, do you care to make any comments, sir? You don't have to, but I thought I'd give you the opportunity.
Well, I -- yeah, I'll make a comment.
Okay.
Some of the things that we proposed when we submitted the original application last year were not events or activities that we had anticipated doing this year. So, some of the changes are the basketball and Owen Place Circle, and we also, because of the construction that's supposed to occur on Hare Street, we had to shuffle around the 5K run, or race, if you will. But others than that, most of the things will be, we've done in the past. We will have a few more events for the kids down in any field, and again, those are not things that will reflect any problems either for the police or for PDW.
Thank you, Art. Appreciate it. Any additional comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I wanted to mention that the Environmental Commission is pleased to participate in the kids' games for the first time. We'll have an activity that involves the sorting out of different types of plastic, to determine which are recyclable and which are not. So, looking forward to both educating and having fun.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Also, I'll work with Washington County on recycling, and it'll be a new program that they received a grant from. I don't have a lot of details, but essentially what will happen is we'll have somebody in the Parking Lot Number Four that will help folks recycle in the proper containers, and that will include food scraps and other paper items, plastic. Those things will be removed by this group from Washington, weighed and used as a base for upcoming years and also for other events in and around the county.
Very good. Thank you, Art. Appreciate it. Anything further on this item? No, then it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to New Business Item 15-114, this is Reinhardt Agreement for 207 Monroe Street. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 9th, 2015 memo from City Manager Campbell and to approve or not to approve an extension of the agreement to December 31st, 2015, for the 207 Monroe Street property listing with Charles Reinhardt Company. Is there a motion?
Moved to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment at all on your memo? And I know we do have a representative of the Charles Reinhardt Company here as well, and we would welcome any comments that you have in just a moment. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council knows, the city's been working with the Charles Reinhardt Company, specific Darby Colano and Rick Magnum, and Rick is here this evening to help market 207 Monroe Street city-owned property for redevelopment, and currently, that's in the process. And we, I know we'd all hoped that we'd be a little bit further along in this proposed development, working with High Meadows LLC for that residential redevelopment propose -- proposal, but because the current extension expires at the end of this month, in June, staff is recommending that it's extended another six months, and hopefully, everything will be ironed out and moving forward with High Meadows LLC at that point, but wanted to -- didn't want that to expire in the middle of the process.
Before we open up for questions, Rick, do you have any comments this evening? We appreciate you being here.
Damian Farrell, High Meadows LLC, the guy with the accent, has had to rethink his plan. He couldn't get the numbers to work, and he needs to build in a little more density into his plan. The architectural interest that Damian is able to generate will remain. We're going to have an interesting end product, and he is -- has a meeting in a private residence on Markana this Wednesday night to discuss that plan with the neighbors so that -- and then he'll, assuming that that's a go, then he'll be back with the city and presenting to the Planning Commission and to all of you. So, I think the next 30 days, I think we'll be in a spot where we're going to know that we're going ahead with Damian, or we're not by this time next month.
Very good. Appreciate that. What questions do we have, either for our guests or for city staff? Excuse me. Mr. Girbaugh, please.
So, are we still actively promoting the property as being available, or not?
Well, it's still active in the Realtor Multiple Listing System. Our sign is still up down there. It doesn't say sold on it, and as a matter of fact, we have taken calls. So, depending on how things work out, if they didn't go ahead with Damian at this time next month, we have some calls to make.
So, it looks like it's more active now than it had been in the last couple of years?
Yes. I would say that's true.
Anything further, Mr. Girbaugh? No. No? Mr. Rhodes, did you have something, sir?
Only to say that I'm anxious to see what Mr. Farrell comes back with on this redesign. I was very impressed with his creative approach to that site and the style of housing that he was willing to provide, and I sincerely hope that we're able to come to some agreement.
Very good. Anything else? Rick, appreciate your time this evening. Thank you for your comments. If there's no further discussion, it's been properly moved by Councilwoman Tahar, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve the extension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to New Business Item 15-115, Application to Purchase MERS Credit Service. This will be a motion to acknowledge the June 9th, 2015 memo from City Manager Campbell and the June 8th, 2015 memo from Stephen Magg and to approve or not to approve the request of Stephen Magg to purchase an additional credit services as outlined in his application for additional credit service with the calculation date of June 1st, 2015, at a cost to the employee of $83,502, and that the City Council has read, understands, and approves the governing body resolution at the bottom of Mr. Magg's application for additional credit service. Is there a motion? I'll move to approve for discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Well, as the mover, let me begin, and I did have a brief conversation with Councilmember Girbaugh on this issue prior to tonight's meeting. Obviously, as the mover of this motion, I will support this application as a courtesy. However, I think it's vitally important that sometime in the next few months, we as a council, with the assistance of staff and perhaps a representative from MERS, have a conversation and hopefully adopt a policy that will outline our behavior on these types of issues moving forward. I think it's important that we understand not only what other municipalities do, but ultimately what the financial cost would be or is going to be to the city. Now, the good news is, as all of you know, that since 2008, those who are hired in at the city are no longer offered a pension, but rather a defined contribution plan. So, I think moving forward, we're going to be experiencing less of these petitions. However, nevertheless, I think we need a better understanding of all of the implications, and I think it would be helpful to have a policy. So, I did mention that briefly to the clerk earlier today, and if everything could be arranged, it looks like we could have a work meeting on this topic as early as August and maybe combine it with another issue. I believe, Mr. Girbaugh, you brought up having a work meeting on the certificate of occupancy issue. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, that would be something separate of this completely.
Totally unrelated, but I think they could be combined into one work meeting. I should have prefaced, I wasn't suggesting that those two issues were in any way related. So, again, I'm willing to support this. I should note, I'm not going to be inclined to support any other requests if they happen to come in before we have, at a minimum, discussed this from a strategic perspective and hopefully not before we have a policy that's been reviewed and adopted. But I would welcome thoughts from my colleagues on council. Let's start with Mr. Rhodes, and then I'll move to you, Mr. Girbaugh.
Yeah. My thoughts on this are very much like yours, Mayor, and I've said this before, while the rules allow someone to do this, purchase of additional years of service, it deprives us of the use of that individual's services to the city while exposing us to potential payments if it doesn't -- if the payment amount does not meet the requirements that come up with MERS. And so, I think also we should develop a policy specific to this. With respect to this specific request this evening, since we have approved others, I don't know of a basis that we could not approve this particular one, but I also would not be in favor of any future ones.
Very good. Mr. Girbaugh?
Couple of questions. Can Todd, Mr. Campbell, can you clarify what generic service time worked is in the first sentence of the letter?
The years that they've worked prior to, they have to work so many, is my understanding, before they qualify for that, and so this is, in this particular case, five years. So, in the past, we've had, I think it's typically, I won't say only, but typically, since I've been here, I believe it's only been folks at the Police Department that have purchased that time, but allows --
Right. Right. Grotes Office. So, almost exclusive, not quite, but have purchased those years so that they could retire earlier.
However, for instance, by the -- for instance, requirements of having actual 25 years of service to qualify for those that still qualify per bargaining agreement for retiree healthcare, if they didn't put in the actual 25 years, they would not qualify for that, those health benefits, retiree health benefits.
I mean, my question for the generic service, that terminology, I'm just making sure that all the years that he's placed or that we're counting towards his retirement, whatever, are with the city? There isn't any credit for outside service related to military or anything else?
Well, it could be other -- we're an Act 88 community, so, and so if we had someone that had years here and they went to a different job, they would transfer those years if it was another MERS community, for instance. Well, that doesn't necessarily have to be MERS community, because if you're an Act 88, even if you're not a MERS, then you qualf -- that your time qualifies, so, from a different community.
Right.
So, you can add that on, even if you, again, if you change communities, if your community is an Act 88, which ours is.
My concern about this is, I did raise this concern a year ago, and I think in fact asked the question of the MERS representative when they were here, and at this point, I would like to move forward with not necessarily approving these any longer because of that concern of the potential liability that's out there. I know we started looking at that, and it started to become regular, but at this point, we didn't realize what kind of huge commitment this city's going to be contributing towards into the future, even though I know this money's coming out of the individual. There's a long-term commitment in there, and it's a potential five years short of what we would, in essence, get out of the individual working for the city. So, we're either hoping that this person will work a full 25 to 30 years, but it's give or take, and so I'm not sure what's beneficial for us at this point to do this.
Anything further, Mr. Girbaugh? Thank you, sir. Ladies, do you have any comments, questions? No? Okay. Any subsequent discussion? Well, let's proceed -- well, let me ask this question before we proceed to vote. Does anyone have any objections if I work with the city manager and city clerk and other interested parties to schedule a work meeting on this topic? Mr. Rhodes, you already voiced your support for that. Mr. Girbaugh, seems like you would be amenable to that as well. Ms. Tahar?
Yes. I think it's essential.
Okay. Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So, I think we'll be aiming for a date in August, or either one of our dates in August, and because we will most likely add this agenda item with another, anticipate a start time of around 6:00. Mr. Girbaugh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the certificate of occupancy issue, I think that might take half hour, 45 minutes.
If even that. I mean, that was just a concern I brought up.
Okay. But I know there was consensus to discuss that in a work meeting, something a little bit more conducive to an open discussion. So, anticipate that, and I appreciate your support, because I think that type of discussion and approach will be beneficial. Well, if there's nothing further, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Marl, seconded by Tahar, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries. Moving on to New Business Item 15-116, Set Public Hearing Date for TIF Amendment. This will be a motion to acknowledge the June 8th, 2015 memo from Business Ambassador Korfman and to approve or not to approve the resolution to set the public hearing for July 20th, 2015, or July 20th, 2015 City Council Meeting, excuse me, on the Tax Increment Finance Authority of the City of Celine's Proposed 2015 Restatement Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan. Is there a motion?
Moved to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girbaugh. Any discussion on this? Councilmember Girbaugh, for the audience's benefit and for council's benefit, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since you worked quite a bit on this, do you want to give council just a brief update on what this is all about and why we're doing what we're doing tonight?
Yeah. In general, what we're looking at is trying to project forward what we think the city's going to be doing in terms of development or aspects that potentially can contribute towards the economic development for the city, and so periodically, we're required to review and actually look at giving kinds of estimates towards types of things that we think may happen or may benefit from city investment, such as technology, smart technology, investments in the either corporation properties or something like that, or even development roads and those type of things that would encourage whatever development. And as a requirement, we put that in there and try and include as much as we can in terms of what we think may potentially happen and what may be something happening 10, 20, 30 years from now. And so, as a result of this, we've gone through and tried to clean up, and the intent is to try and figure out exactly what would be available to sources so that when we look at future developments, we may have abilities to provide investment into those. I think that pretty much covers it. Mr. Rhodes?
You've got a fine job, as always.
Very good. And of course, I believe that when this is actually a discussion item for council's consideration...
Will our bond counsel be present at that meeting? Do you know?
He certainly can be.
Okay. I think it might be helpful to give some clarity and context to all this, but I think Mr. Girbaugh summed it up pretty well. And again, just to note that it was Mr. Girbaugh, Walt Byers, Art Trapp, Ross Schweitzer, Mitch Rhodes from Quantum Signal, and Andy Lund from Toyota, as well as city staff and a representative from Main Street that worked on this over the course of almost a year and a half, Mr. Girbaugh?
About that, yeah. I mean, one of the things that we needed to do with it is to make sure that we are able to maintain this. The state has looked at trying to pull these in together and potentially try and take this type of support from communities and make it more regional, so we're hoping that by reinforcing this, we'll be able to control our own destiny and not necessarily have the county or the state telling us what we have to do or how to spend our money.
Very good. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Campbell?
No.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Any subsequent questions or discussions on this? Again, what we're really doing tonight is setting the public hearing, so there'll be ample opportunity to discuss this at a future meeting. be ample opportunity to discuss this at a future meeting, at our second meeting in July, as a matter of fact. Okay, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Councilmember Gearbaugh, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-117. This is URS professional service proposal for Merchant Park Design. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 10, 2015 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble, and to approve or not to approve the URS proposed associated, the URS proposal, excuse me, associated with the design plans for Phase 1 and 2 and bid documents for Phase 1 in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Can you acknowledge receipt as well?
Acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Is there a second on this? Well, I'll second then. Do you want to kick this off, Mr. Campbell?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you were from the discussions, City Council, the proposed Merchant Square property, the city's had a long-term lease over the several years. Part of the city's responsibility is to maintain it in a safe fashion, but also there have been previous plans to make some significant improvements to it. And one that we've cited earlier was the Quinn Evans Study circa 2005, '06. And so I had initiated a work group of staff and council members and Celine Main Street Design Team folks to look at this and to come up with the proposed improvements, which we presented to City Council to consider moving forward. The last City Council meeting, the consensus was to move forward with this. So the next step, and again, we've been working with URS with these initial preliminary designs, and to move forward with construction drawings and design, we need to hire a firm, and staff is proposing working with, continuing to work with URS. And then also, part of it would be, as we move forward, in the construction administration, making sure everything gets done properly, we would propose, but they would do part of it, but we would do, we would actually, similar to how we do our summer road construction projects where we have our own part-time, the city has their own part-time inspectors, for instance, that are there on a daily basis, that would provide written information, in this particular case, back to URS, to make sure the documents are done properly and such. But, so it would be a combination, and so there would be some additional costs at this, with, for inspections from our end, just like we do with our street projects.
Very good. I know we have a representative from URS here this evening. Do you care to comment at all? We would welcome any thoughts you have, but certainly not a requirement.
Sure.
I just did want to comment that we based our design off the input from the design team and developed the cost estimate for the approximate $250,000 for the constructed park area. We can, should the design team want to scale back and work within a different budget, we can work through the design process as we continue to work with the team to evolve the final plans that might meet a different cost measures.
Very good. Are there any questions from the dais?
Comment?
Comment. All right, we'll open it up for comments, since there are no questions. Mr. Rhodes?
I wanted to say that the primary driving force behind this request is to eliminate the unsafe walking surfaces that exist in that Merchant Plaza at the moment. And that's what is primarily being accomplished by Phase 1 of this effort. And it makes sense, while we're having Phase 1 design and considering the possibility of adding other improvements to that space, that URS also take Phase, the potential Phase 2 into consideration, so that something isn't done that has to be redone later if we move forward. The other thing I wanted to mention is that what we're going on tonight is just the design documents and the bid documents, and not to move forward with anything.
Very good. Additional comments? Ms. Tahar?
Yes. One comment is, I would support the idea of looking at a less costly option, perhaps scaling back Phase 1 without eliminating the possibility of future enhancements. I think that would be very useful as the design work goes forward. The other, the other piece of information that might be useful for us, one of the points that was made about, about the design of Phase 1 is that there's the possibility of producing one to two additional parking spaces in parking lot number one, depending on exactly how the design works out. And it seems to me, I tried to find this in documentation about the Michigan Avenue makeover, but I couldn't, that the cost of producing one new parking space on Michigan Avenue, in the Michigan Avenue project, is kind of breathtaking. And if we balanced, looked at that number and put it in the context of this project, it might make the bottom line of the project more palatable if we knew that producing new parking spaces in other locations costs, I don't know, $80,000. That's, I don't think it's that much, but maybe it is. But if you get my point. So I think that would be useful information for context as we think about it, and as we think about this when we get closer to approving an actual project.
Sure. Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
Just a couple of clarifications. So in Phase 1, would that be divided in the two parts, namely, from the perspective of with or without converting the area where the trash dumpsters and such are in? So if we were only to do work on Merchant's Plaza and not necessarily relocate all of that, will it be priced out and identified that way, or is it all integrated?
The design would be all integrated. The phasing of it could happen, could be set so that the dumpsters stay in place for the time, during Phase 1, and then be relocated for Phase 2.
Just from my perspective, I'm trying to understand what the cost to do 1, 2 of that thing, because I know the biggest cost is going to be relocation of the electrical, the dumpster walls, all of that.
Right.
So if we had to do one thing, I just want to understand what the price of doing just one versus the whole thing for Phase 1 versus the whole thing for Phase 2.
Yeah, I really don't know right off the top of my head.
But if that can be done, I'm not asking that question now, but as part of this proposal, so we have a good understanding, so if we do have a decision to make...
We'll continue to do, as we move forward with the design, we will be developing more detailed cost estimates.
And I just hope that the phasing, or however, the build construction plans are able to be componentized, I guess is what I'm saying, not necessarily that it's all, I don't know how it's going to be. If it's all integrated, then you end up having to do the whole thing at once. So just to give options so that council knows what's going on. The other thing I just wanted to say is that I know that we're talking about a significant amount of money going into this, but the intent is to not only extend at least 20 years, but I believe overall, it'll be approximately 22 or 30 years that we'll have this amortized over, basically. If Mr. Campbell could clarify?
Well, your suggestion from...
Well, it's 20 years, but I can't remember what the total number of years are.
So be adding 20 years to the current contract, which is set to expire in 2027?
Yeah. So you're looking at about, you know, approximately $7,500 a year that we're spending, investing in this to hopefully improve activities and stuff uptown, is just with the cost of the first phase. The second phase, hopefully, that will be fundraised and everything else, so the project is $150,000 or so, not $250,000 at this point.
Do you have anything further, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Nope, that was just a statement.
Okay, I know Mr. Campbell wanted to comment. Please.
Well, I was just gonna, and actually, Mr. Gearbaugh, I think answered a little bit of his own question, that we will certainly provide alternatives. So, you know, here's Phase 1 and 2, here's, you know, if we have to do, make it into five phases. I mean, we will put it into those major components. You know, here's just redoing the concrete and maybe, you know, shoring up the planer beds, if you will. Here's another one for relocating the dumpsters. So we'll, we will come up with what I believe a reasonable, responsible number of alternatives that will, that for council to consider.
Thank you. Anything further? I just want to echo some of the comments that were made by my colleagues. As Mr. Rhodes correctly noted, the impetus for this was to make sure that that space was safe and walkable. While it's true that it is not currently used as a gathering space, it is used by perhaps hundreds of people on a daily basis, both business owners, employees, and customers, to access the businesses and amenities in that vicinity. So we, obviously, we as a community talk a lot about making Celine a walkable, safe, inviting space, and I think that this project aligns with that, with that goal, that community objective. I also want to note, because I believe it was Mr. Rhodes who articulated this, tonight, what we're doing is allocating an amount not to exceed $25,000 to hire URS, who's done an excellent job for us, to plan and design for the future of this space. And I think that it's absolutely critical imperative. So I am very much in support of this motion, and I look forward to digesting and discussing what you and the team come back with. And we appreciate you being here tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Anything further on this agenda item? Mr. Rhodes, please.
Just add one other thing, and that is that there is a very strong potential for a grant to assist with the expense of creating this gathering place through MEDC and their patronicity crowdfunding mechanism. And while currently they're limiting their grants to $50,000 per event or activity because of some uncertainty about their budgeting, typically it's been $100,000. And I think we could very easily qualify for either the 50 or the 100 if we decide to move forward with construction.
And of course, you've got nothing to lose by asking for some grand dollars.
Right.
So, no, that's duly noted. Appreciate you bringing that up. If there's nothing further on this, it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Marl, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-118. This is Rentschler Farm Salvage, or Salvage Barn Roof. This will be a series of two motions. The first is a contract with Celine, shouldn't it be Celine Area Historical Society?
True.
Okay. We'll note that for future, okay, for the future. This will be a motion to acknowledge the June 5, 2015 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the roof replacement and reimbursement contract between the city of Celine and the Celine Area Historic Society, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge, receipt, to approve, and authorize.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Tahar, do you want to be the second to that, Councilwoman Dillon?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment at all, sir?
Thank you. So the Salvage Barn is one of the subjects of the certified local grant, or certified local government grant that we received, and paperwork is still moving forward slowly on that. It is, was identified as, obviously, it's a vital part of the farmstead, and it needs a new roof. It's needed it for a while. Keeping a good roof on an old building is one of the best things you can do to preserve it for the future. We had applied for a grant to install a roof two years ago. That grant was not awarded, and our current CLG grant is part of a process to make the farm more eligible for future grants. In the interim, the family of Al and Florine Rentschler have stepped forward to fund a new roof for the barn, completely at their, from their donations. So to make that happen, since it is a city-owned facility, and the family wished to donate to the society, we have this agreement between the city and the Celine Area Historical Society, where the city will hire the contractor, pay the contractor, and then be reimbursed by the society at the completion of the project. And then the second item on here is the contract with the Roofing Company.
Very good.
Well, first, let's note and thank the generosity of Al and Florine Rentschler. They're actually friends of mine, fellow parishioners at my church, and we appreciate their contribution. It means a great deal. So with that, let me open it up to questions for DPW Director Fordice. Any questions? Any comments? Mr. Gearbaugh, and then Mr. Rhodes?
I just want to extend the thanks to Al and Florine, but also to their children that also contributed to it. And as treasurer of the society, I believe I should be abstaining from this tonight, so I won't be voting on this issue, just to keep it clean.
Both?
Both issues, both the A and B.
Okay, A and B, okay, very good. Your abstention is noted. Mr. Rhodes, I should also note, excuse me, Mr. Rhodes, that means then to carry this motion, because of the number of people we have present, all of the remaining four of us will need to vote in the affirmative. Sorry, Mr. Rhodes.
I was just going to endorse your comments in the first part of Mr. Gearbaugh's also, and recognize the generosity of the Rentschler family, and their willingness to step forward and help preserve the city's museum.
Anything, ladies? No?
Ditto.
Ditto, okay, very good. All right, well, we'll proceed with voting then on the first motion, unless there is discussion. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge, approve, and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and one abstention, correct, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Correct.
And now we'll move on to motion B, which is contract with Sheriff Goslin Roofing. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 5, 2015 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the roof replacement bid from Sheriff Goslin Company in the amount of $16,900, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and authorize.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, and I'll let Ms. Dillon be the second. Do you care to make any additional comments, Mr. Fordice?
This, Sheriff Goslin is the company that recently completed re-roofing the front side of the big barn. That went very well. The Historical Society folks who run the farm were very complimentary of the work and the cleanup efforts afterwards, and so...
Very good. Any questions for our DPW director? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just a statement. We, my understanding, talking with some of the members of the Historical Society, is that this shingle that we're using is a proprietary product of the Sheriff Goslin, so that's the reason why it seems like it's an adequate one to put up there and has lasted quite a long time.
Yeah, very good. I would like to make one more comment.
Please.
The quoted price includes everything except the possible replacement of some of the skip sheathing, which we can't really determine the need for until the existing roof is removed. I inspected it from the underside, and it looked pretty solid for the most part. But just so you're aware, that if we do need to replace some of that, it is $3 per linear foot.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge, approve, and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Move on to new business item 15-119. This is Freedom of Information Act FOIA Public Act and Procedure Guidelines. This is a series of two motions. It'll, the first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 6, 2015 memo from the city attorney's office, and to approve and adopt or not adopt the public summary of FOIA procedures and guidelines.
Move to approve and adopt, acknowledge, receipt, and approve and adopt.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. Mr. Campbell, in the absence of Attorney Smith, do you care to comment on this at all?
Actually...
Oh, Clerk Royal, excuse me. I apologize.
That's okay.
It's all you.
I did bring up some changes that have been brought up with the new FOIA. This is the first changes to the FOIA in 40 years. The city attorney's office has provided us with three draft forms. One of them is the public summary of FOIA procedures and guidelines. The second one is administrative FOIA procedures and guidelines, and the third one is a detailed itemization cost form. Because so many of the communities are doing this, this is kind of a, they're doing a flat procedure. Some of the new fee categories and methods of calculation is the labor cost for searching, locating, and examining records, the labor cost for redaction, the cost of non-paper physical media such as thumb drives, the cost of copies will be 10 cents per sheet, double-sided for eight and a half by 11 and eight and a half by 14, the labor cost of duplication and publication, and the cost of mailing. Those are all different changes in the calculations. There is also a $20 waiver for people who are indigent, and that can happen, you can request that twice a year. There's also a $20 waiver for the organized... There's also a $20 waiver for the organizations, if they are designated by the state, to assist persons with disabilities or mental illness. The good faith deposit is, if it is estimated that the FOIA fees are going to be over $50, a deposit of half of the total estimated fee can be required, but it cannot exceed half of the estimated fees. Late responses, if the city does not respond in a written request in a timely manner, they must reduce the charges for labor costs by 5% per day. Labor costs are limited to hourly wage to the lowest paid employee who is capable of performing the task. The public body may add up to 50% to the labor charge to cover the cost of fringe benefits, and this must be shown on the itemization chart. Time is charged at 15-minute increments and must be rounded down if at an odd amount of time. The changes to the appeals process, if there is a denial of records, an appeal must be made to the city manager with an appeal written on the form and the reasons why the denial should be reversed, and then that will go to city council. Also, a new appeal process for excessive fees, which would also go to the city manager and then be forwarded to the city council. You can also request, you may also file a civil action with the Washtenaw County Circuit Court to challenge the city's denial of a FOIA request, and that must be done within 180 days of the city's denial. And Act 563 also requires the public body to post the new FOIA procedures and guidelines on the city website. There are several changes that have resulted in questions that have yet to be formally resolved, so the interpretations of the rules is still work in progress, so we're working them out as we go along.
Very good, thank you, Clerk Royal. I should also note, and Ms. Dillon is welcome to comment on this, we recently adopted some changes to the FOIA policy at the Saline Area Fire Department. I know that a number of municipalities in our area have already done this, including Lodi and York Townships, and as noted on Scott Smith's memo, excuse me, Nicholas's memo, from Dickinson Wright dated June the 8th, these are all coming about as a result of Public Act 563 of 2014, which I believe was a shirky bill that changed the state's FOIA policy, and thus is forcing us to make some modifications as well. So, Clerk Royal did an excellent job summarizing. Are there questions for the city clerk? Mr. Girbaugh?
My thought was that this was supposed to kind of help streamline the process. What is your opinion at this point?
Well, it does give them more of an itemization. They break, they broke it down to where each item, you have, you can see how much is charged for copies, how much is charged for labor, how much is for benefits. I guess for the residents or the citizens who are asking for it, it does streamline their idea of what they're getting for their money.
So, you feel that it will be more, it'll provide more assistance to the public to actually understand when they're requesting information?
Yes.
Okay. There's a couple of things on here that was like public interest waiver and so forth. How are those determined? There was one, if it's for the public good, who, how is that determined?
Well, the one is if you're indigent and you have to prove that, and that's one of my questions for the attorney, and I haven't figured that out just yet on how that's going to be. And then, the other one was for if it's somebody who is helping, a company that's helping with people with disabilities or mental illness, then they get a waiver of the first 20.
Yeah, I saw those two. I was just curious, when it said, but if, the one section says public interest, and it says if it's furnished without charge or reduced cost, if the city determines the waiver reduction of fees in the public interest because searching for or furnishing copies of the public can be considered a primary benefit to the general public, who determines that?
That's one of those we haven't really ironed out yet.
Look like Todd had...
Yeah, I mean, and they currently have that opportunity now, and so, we will, from time to time, we do get folks that will say, not, it's not typical, but every once in a while, you may get one that says, you know, please don't charge this because this is for the greater good.
So, it's not a good process, is it?
Right, I mean, if they're can, you know, if it's clear, then, yeah, if it's clear, then it's logical, sure, but if there's not, then we'd have to probably ask a few more questions to determine.
And the other thing with this, so, it's requiring us to put it up on our website, can you submit a request via web and email, so?
Can currently, correct.
Okay.
Been able to do that for a while.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Anything further for city staff? Any discussion? Now, then, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Girbaugh, to acknowledge receipt and to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. And motion B will be a motion to acknowledge the June 6, 2015 memo from the city attorney's office, and to approve and adopt or not approve the Freedom of Information Procedures and Guidelines.
Move to acknowledge and approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Any comments on this, Clerk Royal?
Nope.
No? I'm assuming you don't have any comments? Okay, great. Any discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt and approving and adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 15-120, Police Department Copier. This will be a motion to acknowledge the June 10, 2015 memo from Chief Rennick, and the June 9, 2015 memo from Technology Support Coordinator Schon, and to approve or not to approve a 60-month lease with Hasselbring Clark for a Canon IRC 525 at the cost of $168.49 a month.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. I know the memo pretty much speaks for itself, chief, but do you care to comment on this at all?
I would just ask that if you do approve this, the copying machine that we currently have is, has a million-plus copies on it. It breaks weekly, it's broken right now, so we'd really appreciate if we could get it.
Very good. Any questions for the chief? Any discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Now, the chair will entertain a vote to go into closed session. This motion reads, excuse me, yes.
Excuse me, just one second. I was wondering, we have a fair number of folks in the audience who are here for the parking discussion. Would it be permissible to maybe move that up in the agenda, and so they don't have to sit there?
If there are no objections from council, we can do that.
No objections.
No objections? No? Okay, then let's proceed. Mr. Rhodes, you're suggesting that we just take the downtown parking item off the discussion portion of the agenda? Correct. Okay, and we'll leave reports and other announcements and commission, committee and task force reports, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so downtown parking, you, let me first note that you should have contained within your packet a letter from Wally McNeil, the owner of Max Acadian Sifu Shack. It's not dated, but it's addressed to Mayor Marl and members of city council. You should have also received this past week, or perhaps the week before, an email that I believe was addressed to me, but you were CC'd on it, from Carolyn Price, who is one of the co-chairs, or one of the subcommittee chairs. Is that correct, Riley?
Yes.
At Saline Main Street, asking that a decision on parking enforcement be postponed until they have a time to digest the information that was gathered at the Mackinac City Conference, and following a survey that's being circulated amongst all the downtown business owners currently? Okay.
Yeah, we have about 15 responses, and about 85 percent of it, so hopefully, we get that completed in the next two weeks.
Okay, and you would have something for us to discuss then by July the 6th?
Yes.
Okay. You may have seen a response that I sent to Carolyn. I articulated that I don't have a problem delaying this to our next meeting. I don't want to keep delaying it, because I think the uncertainty wears on our downtown property owners and business owners, but considering that there's some, there's an effort underfoot to gather some more information and be thoughtful about this, I don't have an issue waiting to our, waiting till our July 6th meeting, but since this was a discussion item added by council, I couldn't unilaterally omit it from the agenda. So, I'm interested in hearing your thoughts as to whether you want to work on this tonight, or whether you want to postpone it to our next meeting on July the 6th. Can I start with you, Mr. Girbaugh?
I'm fine with leaving enforcement exactly as it is right now till we have...
Okay, till July the 6th? Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
I agree, July 6th.
Okay. Mr. Tahar?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. There's your consensus, folks. So, Riley, you'll make sure to connect with staff and get us some information for the July the 6th, and barring any unforeseen set of circumstances, you can communicate to your members and other interested parties that we will be making a decision at that time. Very good. Anything further on downtown parking? And of course, those of you who attended tonight and were interested in that issue, we appreciate your participation. Mr. Tahar?
You said we would be making a decision, so it will be, come back to us as an action item for specific action, or will it be a discussion item?
It'll be a discussion item, but what I'm going to be looking for is consensus. If we want to maintain the status quo, then obviously, no action would need to be taken. If we want to make some changes, then they will, I mean, a council member can offer any motion he or she wishes from the floor, but it would be my hope that those would come back then at our next meeting, formalized as motions on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
No, no, good question. We all good on that? All right, very good. Well, now, we'll proceed with our closed session. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to convene into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, in particular for the purpose of conducting a personnel evaluation of the city manager. The individual requested the closed session. City council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Is there a motion to convene into closed session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Potem Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Tahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Girbaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
And Mayor Marl.
Yes, so we are convening into closed session now at, what is this?
Is that clock right? Is it already nine? Almost nine?
Eight, yeah, 8:53 PM.
Time flies.
Yeah, they have their own session room.
Mine was that, too.
That's how Blissfield did it. We had to go weed outside in the cold.
I noticed that whenever a paper, I noticed that your paper had printed history there. You had somebody writing follow-ups.
I'm erratic sometimes.
How much did you charge for art?
I don't know what you went to the art school for.
Well, the thing, the thing...
He had some pictures on the mountain picture.
Yeah.
I've always had a picture, but I don't get it.
I like pictures because on the internet, if you don't have a picture or video, you don't know anything about it.
I've been doing this since 2006.
I've been reading, I've read some of them.
I've got a picture with Edison on it.
Yeah. Where do you get the pictures from?
From donate, and I stand there, and anyway, I give them back their picture.
Right.
Sometimes, and I don't get it back, because they're all red.
How often do you make these?
I've been writing up to, even writing along the way.
You write them, yes.
Now, if they don't want their picture there, I give it...
What do you do about that?
I've been writing four a month for Saline, up to four a month, assuming there's four a month.
Right.
And four a month in the minors.
Okay, so four each.
And then, the Saline...
Same article?
All this, that's like 10 a month.
Okay, so relax. How much do you, okay, how much do you charge for? First of all, how much? Proceed.
Oh. So, I'm going to stay, I'm just writing one paper, like I would receive your edition for your drawing.
Right.
Oh, they're getting up and down as fast.
They're going here.
I just think...
I don't know, I thought maybe if somebody has a sign that says I'm smart.
I just wanted to clarify that, so thanks for letting me know.
Well, I don't know. Take care, dear.
Right, and they also...
A moment I heard about the same part.
The interesting thing here is, it's the mainstream design for the city, for Bill Kimbrough's property, it gets a little complicated. Oh, I might have missed that. Are we on the air change?
I just sent it, you know, two books, it's about a copy.
Right.
And you're the city president.
It's a little... That's about six hours.
At a coffee house, it's... On the third floor, there's noise.
Second floor, that's supposed to be... Am I, you can go. Who's yours? So, I'm interested to have, I'm interested to have somebody write about your...
Yeah, porky pally.
Okay.
I don't think we've ever been crazy met. I don't know what this is, but anyway, I've been one that sends you, and I've spent a lot of sidewalks.
Right.
Most of the times, it's not bad on you.
Right.
You're recent one that I re-read, and I know there's a lot of that, worse stuff. But we walked a lot of sidewalks, where those streets are covered in flat roads, or tripped, ramblin', parcels, and then, township changes their mind about how they do trees, and these trees are everywhere.
So, clearly, they have a clean agreement. Thank you, I'm Milo City Council right now.
Yes, I'm Milo City Council.
Okay.
Well, 2007...
Or I'm Milo of York.
Well, you don't need to kind of have nobody today, so no.
So, there's no problem, can you cover that in Milo? Well, I'd be interested, whatever that is, Tuesday, whatever you do for...
Jeff, got a new street, please, for going, huh?
I was already thinking about...
Because I noticed some candidate, they haven't had time to do the panels.
But you've worked for, I didn't want to...
Between, that's...
Yeah, right, to me, honestly, here's what I'm checking out.
Yeah.
If I write something, if Ann Arbor News writes something about Saline, that I don't know, I write about a paragraph, and could point my story to their subject. And I did...
Is that useful to your...
And this is... And I think a lot, they'll break a piece of the radio, and you're standing, so it wouldn't be out, or you saw that, and the guy who got the chair for the festival.
Oh, no.
So, it'll say, yeah, they wrote the story, they didn't know who it was, so I wrote the story, only when we was in town, you know, and all of a sudden, everybody's interested in this story because of, or there's something...
Was she athletic, or...
Assistant to the head, like, director, all the years of the city council in 2000, they didn't even know, and he got them, he stepped down because he, before the election, announced he wasn't going to run, because he got him, so anyway, so here's what I'm interested in. You go to a York council, you cover the meeting like a meeting, here's what they did, and then you take out, where'd they get twice a month? Just once. So, I'll be $50 for the meeting story, and if there's a story, add that meeting, or I'll give you something else, you blow up that story. You just got to tell me what that is, and then I'll do that for it. I'd like to have a picture of, like, for each story, like, as a council supervisor, or something like that. Right.
Sometimes I just go around.
Right, that's always a good thing to have a file picture. Right, you can do that too. Or if you read the agenda and you see something coming up, you might take a picture of a little building that's falling. You know, York Township, I don't know if that exists, but. So anyway, so that, if you want to do York Township for me. And then do, how much contract for the history articles?
Yeah, because I want to write about this.
Right. Oh, you have an account there?
Oh, yeah.
It's twenty bucks a month, and I use it forever. I should probably ask you to research some stuff in my family. I've always been too cheap to look into that.
I don't know, I, I don't watch that.
Well, here's another, how about, how about this? So, I got you doing one York story, one, two York stories. I'll give you. And, and if it catches, if the numbers are. Does that make sense to you? Just, I need a picture with every piece, with every story. Now, what I need is a pay tab account. You have pay tab? Okay, so that's why I pay, I just pay.
You said fifty dollars for York and fifty dollars for York.
Yeah. You know, like if, like, so today's meeting would be like a list of all the different things to get. Maybe one of those stories is a bigger issue, like maybe you want to look into. Which I think from tonight's meeting.
For most newspapers, you would expect to take one thing out of it, make it most of the story and then say, oh, sure.
Right.
But if there's a number of things that are not really that much bigger than the other, I'm going, then it's.
But kind of like, that's how I would like you to do it. And then, and then for the second story, you.
I call it the next level method, where you suck all the seeds in a row, but the first story is the most. Okay, you aren't gonna read the big story.
Yeah. And then the second story from York would be something that you heard in the meeting, or maybe something else going on in York Township. You know, maybe they say there's a, something going on at one of the parks, just to get a picture or something.
Yeah, they're not working right now. This city is donating, but it's not trees.
For what?
In one of the parks.
Okay.
And that's, I know that we have a one, a few girls writing up.
Right.
And I asked them to let me know when they're gonna start unloading them off in parks. And they laugh and they say, oh, this is a little much.
That's really, that's not my.
It could be, I don't know about that, because you can think about what people are interested in. So, DeBella.
This is Trump. Hope it's being built. And I'm still about to put down before we have landing. Yeah, New York Township, they've got this whole long list.
Yeah.
Crown office getting worked on. You know, electric going like that, or a porch, or a furnace, or a fireplace.
Yeah.
So, he's got this like several pages on him.
Okay, so then, and then the other thing, the history. So like twice a month, if you do that.
Alan, they, they just.
Yeah, only fifty dollars. But that's, but if, I need to see that. I like seeing people read that stuff, but I don't know if they do.
Where are you going to find out? They don't live in, they don't do that, you can just tell me.
I know. Well, I just have, right, my phone tells me how much, you know, I have mobile analytics. Think about the internet, because you know exactly how much. And it's sad, really, because like more people will read about shit. I love it too, then we'll read about some of the authorities, you know.
Now, you're always going to ask me about your private.
Right.
And I put that it was not a private.
At one point it was.
Never, never.
Yeah.
I once lived on. Believe me, it's not.
Do you mean, did you have yourself a.
Very good. When I was swimming pool.
We're looking for a mansion.
I got you that. Three hours and they get you.
Yeah, our, yeah, our.
Okay.
She also, I'm not a good anthropology. Archaeology. A background in that. Who might sort of see like two and a whole stories.
I've seen your website, Milo, with all the people and some of the, it's been a while since I've been there, but I read some of your stories.
I've got almost two thousand pictures of Milo.
Right.
Now, Celine does.
Right, I know.
They've got quite a few, nothing like that.
So, I'm interested in like, besides the buildings. I don't know if you can get that, but I'm not asking you to make it up either. But there are, but there are.
Well, my predecessor in Milo used to say that a friend of the building who bowed on Milo was haunted. And that he was there in the middle of the night, he sure.
That's not quite, that's not quite there, but it's almost.
What do you got, what are those pet things?
Yeah.
Doing so many.
I gotta get my, I gotta get my ten thousand.
They're the same.
Of course, it looks like we've got another big story, but I don't know when we get, when we get out of here. So, pictures of old buildings, stories about them. Pictures of old that you've been doing, so you know what, you know what the general idea is.
Well, in Milo, there's a, one of the three-story buildings. They had a, they're part of the. Because the neighbor rented them, and he was a good man, he was a teenager.
Right.
But that was another, I should play the big kid. But the deed said that they were not allowed to drink.
Yeah.
So I know they've been violating that deed. So the descendants of that grand thor who sold them that, well, it's, you know, if you get a.
All right, so this is a pretty good start, I think. And then if you hear things, oh, you can take my email. It's cran, T R A N. At. The Celine Post. Dot com. So, if you hear, if you have any other ideas for stories, let me know. Start off where it is right there. If you have any good ideas. Really, what I'd like, my, my idea is to cover, start covering Pittsfield Township meetings. I don't know if those, I don't know if that's.
Well, we depend on where they.
Right.
They're not that.
Right. So I'm looking at right now, I got Celine Township, Bob already covers that for me, and I cover this.
So looking ahead of me, I want to register for a career.
In Celine. In the Celine area school district.
School district, okay.
Right.
I just submitted one last night to the Heritage Chief, it was a policy, and it was the Burmester family. And they're on the very edge of the Celine district, school district. And I mentioned that the guy that lives there, lived there his whole life, and he graduated from Celine.
Yeah.
So I went ahead and set that up right there, my article. So the tag just like, well, that I got the picture of, so people that were like, yes, that's a little.
Right, yeah. Well, I'm good to go. That's what I'm looking for. Burmesters, I think.
Oh, they're for the surgeon department.
Yeah. Blissfield, they're all named Burmester.
Yeah, those are my names. Yes, okay.
I'm surprised they haven't announced anything about that Celine before yet, otherwise.
No, but everybody knows.
Right.
You know, last week I went to the paper. I watched it on the paper.
That's making patience on a Monday, right now.
And I walked in.
Why, why now?
It was a little bit smug, because you know what? And he had a written letter from the people that had it in my.
Really?
Self, it said, our last G.
Oh, yeah. So why would they not tell the reader?
They just, they called their, the people that sell the newspapers for it.
Right.
So you can't, of course, go mean, so I knew that to be.
Yeah.
But if I'd have bought my paper profer, I wouldn't know.
I, I found out from a reporter who went to the, saw it again last week, who said, it was my last G.
You know, everybody knew.
They worked in a fold. Yeah, and they.
Well, yeah, they were, they were basically the public rent factor. And they did not have the support of their communities, because in Iowa, people hated it.
Hey, Celine News is new, we don't want to take them, they were just.
And then the people in Celine that said, we don't want to get newspapers, they said, that's not up there.
And then, and then they made it worse by putting the whole county in there.
Well, and then they couldn't get advertising from anywhere.
Well, you know, the thing is, though, is. It's not just, I mean, you blame the papers to a certain extent, because they did, they did roll back, they did cut back. They made it to papers done. But who, who were the businesses that were advertising?
Well, one day, you'd be touched with something else, you know, the advertising money, and the eagles. But I don't know what they were doing with the advertising money, but they were using it in newspapers, after newspapers.
No, and I know the Eagles get some advertising, but. That guy who sells ads. But I know Enrique and Milo Blissfield, feeling this.
Can you tell me what link is Mr. Powell? So I can give you the follow page.
That sounds good. I, I just write as long as it takes you to tell a story.
Because on the internet, you don't care.
To a certain extent, but here's the thing, right, on the internet, it doesn't matter, because you're not taking the wing columnages. But what matters is that people have short attention span.
Yes, you gotta get their attention right away.
What were you saying?
Yeah, you can't wait till the end until your punchline.
You, you can go sit there on your couch and read a long story on the internet the way you do with a newspaper. Very often, it can happen.
Fairly, this is great, here, I'll check on Pittsfield, let's see what they need, if you want me to check on it.
Yeah. If you want to.
They got any word of relation on that?
I have no idea. I never considered, see, even though that's York, I didn't consider that to be Celine. You know, because.
They're on a great road.
It's on.
Close to this line, I think.
Right.
But it's a line in school district.
No.
No, I doubt it.
On the other side of, of the expressway.
Okay, okay.
Oh, well, yes. What's going on, chief, they got?
Have they found anybody?
I have no idea, they're very, very tight to talk about.
That's what it seems like.
Hey, did you hear about some naked guy who got run over by a garbage truck? You know better than I do.
God, making that, oh.
So I heard some guy Saturday night, four in the morning. Where? Not here. That you guys, I think, were called out to help out, but it was Michigan State. Huh? Some naked guy running around, speaking in tongues. Got, got hit by a garbage truck, and then they couldn't find him. No, I didn't know.
What was it, their truck doing out?
Lived in Torwood or something.
Yeah, but what night did you, that doesn't make sense, but the trash.
Just without toll. You hear all kinds of things.
But because the trash goes on Thursday, on that side of town.
See, that's what, that, no, that's what he's talking, he's talking about your trash, that's what he's talking. Uh, that's just the rumor. Everyone will read that story. Oh, they would, absolutely would.
But you're supposed to start with it myself, I thought, oh, man, you know, I, why should I really be that hurted about it? But I guess.
Oh, what? It murdered. I, I read, I read one of those, yeah, I had to read a couple of those stories, but I'm surprised. They've been very tight, but. And you're trying to even a inch of a news information. They have a new story. I see, that's how the New York's gonna get a new story. They have anybody of interest. Yeah, I think they did.
Yes, they have a person.
That was a description, but they won't save the person's.
They didn't even want to let out who owned the house.
Yeah.
But the neighbors did. Said he lived there. How homeless.
But those neighbors, they.
Well, especially when you're concerned.
I always say.
Don't get yourself.
Put the information out.
Run your next to me, yeah.
As if the police is. And you have, like us, conducting their own professional investigations.
The only thing I don't like New Street, the land, just.
Yeah.
There's no reason to be.
Oh, I mean, I could just go up.
What I think makes it where, where it is though, is like when it's a funeral concession. But I think sometimes that's a good thing. Target's down the street.
Yes, that's, that's. But when you've got, you know.
You're not in their face, even, you're looking at it from across the side.
Because it's horrendous having lost, let alone, you know.
One time I was sitting in a funeral, I accidentally picked up my pen for some purpose that nothing to do with anything. And somebody asked me later, oh, were you taking note? I was going, hey, no, you know? No way, it was a take note at a funeral.
I can't believe our state, our girls did state.
I never did, I didn't, they took pictures of the procession.
Oh, that was nice.
Oh, the girls?
Yeah, the girls. That was super. Won state finals.
Really?
Yeah, first time ever. Yeah, I thought that.
Soccer.
Oh, I mean, you, I'm asking for money for school, right?
Yeah, one mill.
And I taught you, it's just that great, and I've had this thing.
I'm trying to figure out how you talk yourself a Democrat.
I'm a conservative. But anyway.
But the same as a liberal Republican. But the same as a liberal Republican.
Four P.M. Well, I guess we're gonna see if it's gonna be called back to order. Clerk, want to call the roll to see if we're interested in convening into regular session?
Mayor Protem Rhodes.
Yes.
Councilmember Tahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gierba?
Uh, yeah.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Morrow?
Yes, so we're reconvened at nine twenty-four P.M. The first item, well, actually, we have a series of motions. It's A through E. Business item C dash fifteen dash one twenty-one, this is staff appointments and contracts for fiscal year sixteen. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June fifth, twenty fifteen memo from City Manager Campbell regarding annual non-union staff contracts.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Campbell, do you care to make any comment?
My apologies.
Certainly not necessary. And your memo speaks for itself, but we welcome any thoughts you may have.
Sorry.
Nope, it's quite all right.
So the proposed, um, contracts are based on what was proposed and approved in the budget for fiscal year sixteen with the two percent COLA along with steps or longevity if you stepped out in the current payment formula. And that is, uh, they said that was approved by council at the last city council meeting in the, uh, in the budget for two thousand and sixteen. It goes into effect July first. And that was to keep, uh, keep steady, if you will, with the current collective bargaining agreements that are... That will run through, expire next year.
And I should note, too, before I open it up for questions, that you may recall that we were going to change the way we go about appointing staff members. We had a work meeting probably about a year and a half ago now, and it was brought up maybe about a month ago as a discussion item, and the result was inconclusive. So we will be meeting again sometime in the late summer, early fall with city staff, and hopefully with our Labor Council, Steve Gerard, to discuss how best we can move forward. I just wanted to note that. But again, because we did not change our policy, we are doing what we've done for many decades. So with that, unless there are questions for me about the process moving forward, I would open it up for questions for Mr. Campbell. Ms. Tahar?
Actually, a comment on what you just said, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I would welcome coming back to the question of the appointments and another detailed work session. I think the work session you mentioned seemed... We seemed all to be on the same path, and then after the passage of some time, when something appeared to make the change that was believed we wanted, we were not on that page anymore. So I think we need more discussion and better understanding.
Absolutely.
So I endorse that idea.
Very good. If there's nothing further or any additional... I guess that wasn't a question, but any additional thoughts, comments? No, then it's been properly moved by... I'm sorry, Mr. Gierba, did you have one?
Um, yeah, I just was gonna clarify. What again was the contracted percentage increase this year? For the police and the DPW and stuff like?
Uh, two percent within longevity, or if they're... Trying to think, we might... We do have some steps because we did... We have hired a couple of new officers and, of course, well, now we've two new DPW folks. But so the steps and then a majority of folks have their longevity.
So in overall, two percent, but and based on an average... I'm looking at what the percentages are on this grid in comparison to C.
Right, it would be very similar when you add in there, again, if they don't have... If they have steps, it would be very similar. If they're stepped out and have longevity, it would be very similar.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further for our city manager? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Motion B will be a motion to approve or not to approve the classification and compensation plan grid effective July one, twenty fifteen, for fiscal year twenty sixteen.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Any discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Motion C will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution as submitted, appointing staff and setting their compensation for a period of July one, twenty fifteen, through June thirtieth, twenty sixteen.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of approving and adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Motion D will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution as submitted, appointing city officers for a period of July one, twenty fifteen, through July thirtieth, twenty sixteen, excuse me, and to acknowledge receipt and reading of ordinance number seven seven one, an ordinance to amend the city of Celine code fixing the current compensation of appointed officers, and to approve and adopt or not to adopt said ordinance number seven seven one as submitted.
Move to approve and adopt, and approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Again, this is pretty standard stuff from years past. Is there any discussion? No discussion? We'll proceed to vote then. All those in favor of the motion by Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to approve and adopt, and approve and adopt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And the last motion, motion E, will be a motion to approve or not to approve the employment contracts with appointed staff and officers for a period of July one, twenty fifteen, through June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor, clerk, and city manager to execute the employee... Employment contracts as submitted.
Move to approve and authorize.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Rhodes. Any discussion? No? Okay, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Rhodes, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of the agenda. Please note that downtown parking has been subtracted because we discussed that prior to proceeding into closed session. So we just have commission committee and task force reports and other announcements. So we'll start with commission committee and task force reports from council members. Mayor Protem Rhodes?
The Environmental Commission will staff a table at the farmer's market this Saturday. We do that the third Saturday of each month and have materials available to hand out. And not exactly under commission, but related to that, I attended the seventh grade science class where they presented the results of their study of the Celine River water quality. This is the second year for that event, and so I am... Well, two points doesn't necessarily indicate a trend. Generally speaking, Celine River at Mill Pond is still in good shape. And through the gracious response of Connie Dehan, I was able to present certificates to the seventh grade presenters, designating them as honorary environmental engineers on behalf of the city.
Very nice. Excellent. Any other commission committee or task force reports? Just wanted to share, the Sesquicentennial Task Force met for the second time this past Monday. It was a full house. All of the appointed members were able to attend. Had a good, robust discussion for about an hour. I would... I should note, I would have let Councilmember Roth take the lead on this, but of course, he is absent this evening. And the big thing to come out of that meeting was the desire to establish a number of subcommittees, which I hope to bring before you for your review and approval, most likely at our first meeting in August. So if you know of some people who are interested in getting involved in the Sesquicentennial, please have them contact either myself, Councilmember Roth, or any members of the task force, because we want to assemble probably six to eight people on each one of the subcommittees. And then again, because it is a city-sanctioned organization, those appointments and the establishment of subcommittees would need to be approved and authorized by city council. So again, like to get that in place over the next month and a half and then have it... Have those available for your review and hopefully your approval by our first meeting in August. Are there any other commission committee or task force reports? How about reports or other announcements? Mr. Gierba?
I just want to encourage our citizenry to participate in the Fourth of July event that's gonna be held at the Celine Depot. It's in combination with the American Legion, and they're gonna have a train tour and some other aspects. A little dig, kind of like for archaeology, for the kids to look, dig through things. It's kind of a tour to go up and back and forth just to show our recognition of Fourth of July. It's a new event that the Historical Society is putting on, and I can't tell you the exact hours, but it's Fourth of July. And so if you're not going anywhere, we encourage you to come by and help us celebrate the founding of our nation.
Very good. July fourth, what time again, Mr. Gierba?
I believe it's one to four.
Okay, at the Depot Museum.
At the Depot.
Very good.
That would be the Fourth of July.
Ms. Tahar?
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure if this made it into the information packets, the letter from you, Mayor Morrow, to Mayor Bolish.
I don't believe it did. I don't believe you provided a copy for individual council members. I apologize.
So, no, that's fine. It wasn't clear whether I had asked you to do that or not. So I would just mention that on Saturday, Sarah Schuster, the German teacher at Celine High School, seventeen students from Celine High School, and Mr. Roth left for Lindenberg, Germany, where they will be spending the next number of days, twelve, I think, ten to twelve days. They will be received at City Hall by the mayor, as the German group was received here at City Hall by Mayor Morrow when they were here in the fall. And they will be visiting the school, staying with families, and doing some traveling. I got a text message today from one of the teachers in Lindenberg, who said everyone arrived happy and healthy.
Good, very good, excellent. We look forward to hearing about the trip when they return. Any other reports or announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
I have two items. First is, I wanted to recognize the local business Flatout, who has graciously sponsored Rec on the Go, which is an event that is held at four different locations from June fifteenth to August the seventh, two hours a day, for ages five through twelve, and it's free to the participants, thanks to Flatout. And also, of course, to the folks from Parks and Rec Commission, Recreation Center. And then the second thing was, in our consent agenda, we approved a street closure for a neighborhood block party, and I was really happy to see that. And I think we ought to do whatever we can to encourage more neighborhood groups to come together to celebrate their existence in the city.
Absolutely. Very good. Well, just one other announcement that I have, and I think you all should have received an email communicate about this, but I had a event at the Senior Center this past Thursday, my fourth annual senior conference, which I thought was a great success. It was an expanded and enlarged event from years past. It included a government panel, but this year also included a breakfast, free health screenings provided by Saint Joe Mercy Health System, and two breakout sessions. Carla Scruggs, Todd Campbell, and Catherine Skol came from the city to present. Mr. Fordyce was there, as well as Chief Rennick. And I got a lot of nice compliments, shared a lot of pertinent information about the community to our senior population. And as much as they liked the information and as much as they liked the data that was distributed to them in their packets, I think they liked Chef Musto's cooking demonstration the best. So thanks to our chef from our high school, I have to say, and I would have never thought to put these things together, but his, and Mary can maybe speak to this as well, his chilled watermelon blue cheese and mint salad was just delicious. And that's all it contained, were those three ingredients. It's so easy that I could make that at home, if I actually purchased some groceries. But, yeah, it was a great success, and I want to thank the staff at the Senior Center and all those who helped make the event possible. If there are no additional discussion items, we'll proceed with the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and I would like to absolutely compliment the mayor on a wonderful, wonderful day on behalf of the seniors and the people. The presentation and the programs were excellent. My comments are regarding, of course, I'm asking if everyone received a letter from Marion Fappo regarding my letter that I submitted a month ago. Is that... And I guess what I'm asking is eventually if there would be a conversation with me. I have put time, I have put expense, and I think it's easy and evident to know that I'm very concerned about the safety of not only this area, but all the areas. And I would hope that at some time, and I think it's justified, that there will be a discussion on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional citizen comments? Let me note, and I just confirmed this with the city clerk, your letter from Mrs. Fappo was received today around ten o'clock in the morning. Copies were made, and it was placed in every council member's mailbox. So unless they have gone to their mailbox between then and now, they would not have received it. I'm making note of that. You may pick up the letter, retrieve the letter at any time, or of course, wait for your packet to be delivered in a couple of weeks. We will add that item to the discussion portion of our agenda at our next meeting on July the sixth. And as I have stated emphatically in the past, I'll state it again tonight, this city, this entire council, takes the issue of walkability very seriously. We take the condition of our sidewalks very seriously. In fact, that's why we're proceeding with a commercial grinding, which will rectify approximately ninety percent of the defects in our sidewalk inventory. And unless the city manager or DPW director who's in the audience tell me I'm wrong, I believe the contract to award that job will be an action item at our next meeting as well on July the sixth. Is that correct? Very good, okay. Are there any other citizen comments? Any other items to be brought before city council this evening? No, then please note that our next regular meeting is on July the sixth at seven thirty, and that will be followed by a meeting on July the twentieth. We will have a work meeting on July the twentieth to go over the next round of ordinance changes, beginning at six forty-five, and then a regular meeting at seven thirty. We have already excused the absences of council members Cybo Koenig and Roth, so we can dispense with the motion that's enumerated on your agenda. So at this time, the chair would seek a motion to adjourn this regular council meeting at, what's that, nine forty-two P.M. Thank you, Councilmember Gierba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the meeting is adjourned.